This is gonna be a busy day.
I gotta step up my fashion game with Mark Scholl over here.
You do.
I mean.
I'm having our assessor check on this letter from Kent's lawyers.
I have not got to it yet.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And this is?
That is the.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Well, good morning, everyone. What a lively, wonderful, full crowd we have today. Thank you all for coming. I will now call to order the January 26, 2023 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, would you please take the role?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: Clerk to the Board Tony Mayernick, County Council Stephen Madcor. Role call: Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Thank you all. Let's rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning again, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom, we will queue you up when the time is right for you to speak. A general public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, what's the first item?
Chair Smith and Board, the first item is a Board Discussion item, and it is the Gladstone Oak Lodge Library Funding. This has gotten quite a bit of attention recently, and so I wanted to bring an update to you and a proposal. And I know there's many here in the audience who are interested in this topic as well. So just a very, very brief history first, Commissioners, you and the public know. In November 2008, the voters of Clackamas County created the Library District of Clackamas County, which is meant to provide stable funding for library services throughout the county by collecting district-wide property taxes and distributing those funds directly to library services providers. Prior to 2008, the County General Fund, or Property Taxes, paid for libraries in Clackamas County. So to relieve that burden, the Board went to the voters, and the voters approved creating a library district. As part of that transition from the General Fund to the new library district dollars, back in 2009, the Clackamas County Board authorized general fund contributions of approximately $1 million to every library in the county, to the cities that operate libraries, to support that transition. In 2011, the City of Gladstone in Clackamas County entered into an intergovernmental agreement where the City of Gladstone would create a library that would support not only the city residents of Gladstone, but also the residents of unincorporated Oak Lodge, Oak Grove. And that was the plan for many years until November 2014, when the voters of Gladstone approved ballot measure 3-446, which authorized the construction of a library in Gladstone and for Oak Lodge. However, in the same ballot measure, the voters said no city funds can be used for this project, which that caused a big concern, because then who was going to pay for it? Over time, there were some disputes between the City of Gladstone and Clackamas County that led to potential litigation that ultimately, long story short, ended in a settlement agreement in 2017 between Clackamas County and the City of Gladstone, which ultimately meant, and the agreement was, that there would be one library, two buildings. One library system with two buildings created, one in Gladstone, one in the Oak Lodge, Oak Grove area. And that is what we have been operating with ever since. The funding of the projects, both projects have a multitude of sources, including for Gladstone, the City of Gladstone contributing to that project. The state legislature authorized ARPA dollars for both Oak Lodge and Gladstone projects last year. Commissioners, you very graciously authorized county ARPA dollars for both projects earlier or last year. There are library and capital reserves from the district library tax that are available for both projects. Unfortunately, there is still a funding gap for both projects, a total of $8.1 million as of the numbers we ran in March 2022. So those are already a year, almost a year old. But as of March 2022, the construction estimates, the total cost, there is still an $8.1 million gap of funding for both projects. And I know that has brought great interest to the Board and the public. So I'm cutting to the chase. Commissioners, I have a recommendation for you today, and that is to fund the funding gap with county general funds. And how we will do that, and you heard this yesterday in your Budget Committee meeting, Clackamas County has a healthy reserve fund balance at the end of each fiscal year, meaning funds that we have not spent, which is good. Our departments and offices are being very frugal. We're only spending the money that we absolutely need to, and there's always a carryover at the end of the year. Outside of contingency and reserves, which are fully funded, there is still a net reserve carryover of approximately $40 to $50 million a year, which then goes into the beginning fund balance of the next fiscal year. This net fund carryover balance is what staff is planning to use to help fund the replacement county courthouse, in addition to strategic reductions you will be considering later for next fiscal year. However, this $8.1 million can be put into the equation, and it already is, and it still helps us have a balanced budget for 31 fiscal years. 31 fiscal years. So it would be fiscal year 2054, 31 years from now, that there'll be a problem. However, that's 31 years for this Board or future Boards and future staff to find a way to cover basically this $8.1 million funding decision you could potentially make. So that is my proposal to you. We still need to run the final construction numbers, which staff will do in the next 60 days, to get the final, final number of what the costs will be for both libraries, and we'll bring that back to you. But I do suggest for your consideration today at Board Discussion, if you would accept my proposal, and that is, let's just make the decision and provide certainty that the County General Fund in a cash payment, not bonded, cash payment, fund the, at this point, approximately 8 million gap to move forward and complete the Gladstone and Oak Lodge libraries. I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's.
Very good. I will entertain comments from Commissioners. We have a couple in here, and then I'll make a comment eventually. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Gary, for the condensed summary of a lot of history. And you didn't go back into the '90s or the '80s and so forth, and I'm glad you didn't. All it does is make it more complicated, but I think you did a great job. And I want to recognize, number one, the efforts of all the past elected officials, current elected officials, administration here at the county, administration in the cities, because Commissioner Schrader and I both sat at C4 over these years, and when C4 was first created in 2001. And so we heard about the library scenario since then. And Mark, Commissioner Schrader has been a big advocate. I know that Commissioner Schrader and both Chair Smith also have history as librarians themselves, so I know they have a passion for this. But I do want to recognize, you know, the former mayor of Gladstone, Mayor Stempel, for all her work, and the former administrator, Don Krupp, for his work in getting the settlement agreement with Gladstone and getting us where we are today. So thank you for that, and a lot to say, but I'm just gonna keep it short as I can and listen to my colleagues here. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes. We earlier moved some $15 million of county ARPA funds to fund the two libraries, $6 million for Gladstone, $9 million for Oak Lodge. Now, the federal government has, over time, the last few, couple of years, changed the guidance on the distribution of ARPA dollars. There's no threat or concern about the first 15 million, is that correct?
That is correct. No threat, because we followed the rules in place at the time you made the decision.
Okay. Okay. Well, I don't see any other foreseeable alternative to your idea for funding the $8.1 million. I do, again, have concerns about, we have been shocked more than one time in the last couple of years on the actual bid, contract bid amounts on different construction projects, our courthouse to be one of them. So if this $8.1 million doesn't cover what comes in in the next couple of months as to the actual construction contract price for the Gladstone and Oak Lodge library, I don't know what other means we'd have to react to something greater than the $8.1 million. So I know no one in here can answer what is going to be the exact cost of these two libraries, but if anybody in here has any ability to hold down the cost, effect those prices, I recommend you do it, because after today, I don't think the county is gonna have any, well, the only way we're gonna be able to go past $8.1 million is right here, and I can't do it. So, okay, thank you very much for your time today.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Scholl, I too have some concerns that I'll voice at the end. Commissioner West, you're up.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I'm not an honor.
Isn't that the proper term?
I never went to law school.
Chair.
I know, but in the city government, we always refer to the mayor as "Your Honor," or "Chair."
Thank you for the accolades.
Yes, out of reverence for your position, Chair. Thank you, Chair Smith, for recognizing me. Sometimes government, well, actually, all too often, government does a lot of things to erode trust from its constituents. And not one Board like Commissioner Savis has, you know, very astutely pointed out, has many Boards, many administrators have dealt with this for a large period of time. Some of your children probably never got to go to this library because, as children, because they've aged and are now on maybe to college, or maybe even have children of their own. I feel like that this government, Clackamas County as an entity, made a promise to all of you. We have to keep that promise. You also belong to a county that cares about your dollar, every penny, every cent. Sometimes we squabble over these very important issues because we care about the taxpayers' dollars, so do you. But fundamental to a healthy community is a thriving library. I didn't come from a lot of money, very blue collar family. My Aunt Rita used to take me and my cousin Leslie, who lives in Oak Grove, to the library because that's how we could be entertained on a budget and learn at the same time. I fell in love with reading because of people like Aunt Rita and my cousin Leslie in the programming at the St. John's Library and at the North Portland Library on Killingsworth. Those little brick structures were fundamental in my childhood. I think they're important, I think this Board thinks those things are important, and I want to make sure that we are acting in good faith with our community and getting your library built. It's past time, and we need to keep that promise.
Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, what a great day this is for all of us here today. I started getting involved in community service because of libraries, and it's a pleasure to have this continue to be one of the threads in my life as a public servant. And so I'm just gonna read a couple of quick quotes. Without libraries, what have we? We have no past, and we have no future. That's from Ray Bradbury. And then Rita Mae Brown says, "When I got my library card, that was when my life began." And I think that is what is key to libraries, because it enables everyone free and equal access to books, to information, to other media. And I've said this time and time again, libraries are the bedrock of our democracy. So what a proud day we have today in order to really do that for our communities of Gladstone and our communities of Oak Grove. And I know it's going to be, let's see, two libraries, one system. So go forth and do good. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Savis, I haven't spoken yet. Thank you. I share the sentiments from everybody on this panel, but especially Commissioner Scholl's comments, we do not know how much this is going to cost. And while everybody is very happy and exuberant, and I love that, I caution you, there is a contingency in this motion, that if it comes in at a cost that isn't doable, then we're gonna have to make some adjustments. And I think that's realistic. I think it's realistic on the community members. You've all been in business, you've all had family budgets that you need to balance, and you've had to make contingencies and make adjustments your entire life. And I'm asking that if you allow the same for this Board going forward. Gary, I do have a question about the ownership of both the Gladstone Library and the Oak Lodge Library. Who would own those?
Clackamas County.
And then who is responsible for the maintenance going forward?
Clackamas County.
And do we have a maintenance schedule for that?
No, not yet.
So would it be wise in this construction to maybe consider that, not more money, but construction going forward? Now, on the courthouse, you know, we got a lot of criticism for the model we use, but in the price of our courthouse, maintenance for 30 years is built into it. But I don't think the folks in this room are willing to do that, because it's not expensive. So in 30 years, when our bond is paid for on the courthouse, we will have a building that is practically as good of a shape as it was when it's brand new. So I am concerned is we're building out the maintenance on. And by the way, I've been reviewing Core County Services for this Board to consider, and you may not know this, but one of the line items is maintenance. And by law, if county government owns buildings, they must maintain them. It doesn't say to what degree, there's a revised statute on that, but I am concerned somewhat on that. Stephen Madcor, do you have any additions to this?
I do not, Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
I thank you, Chair. I appreciate all the concerns that have been discussed here. I'm gonna channel Administrator Krupp and, you know, and give him some credit, as well as, again, Jackie Betts, the city administrator from Gladstone. We have at least one elected official here from the City of Gladstone here this morning. And I was hoping maybe on February 1st, and we didn't, so I'm perfectly fine where we are today, but in February 1st, it might have been our first opportunity, the five of us, to actually share some of the means and ways in which your concerns would be allayed, whereby the annual contribution from the City of Gladstone was designed to pay the debt service for a good faith and credit bond to help fund the share of the Gladstone Library as well as all the other costs. So that contribution is still in play, and it goes on in perpetuity for Gladstone Library and operations and financing and so forth. So had I had a chance, or had we had a chance to discuss that, I think we could allay the financing concerns in the sense that this is not just, you know, this is not just the county, and the means to make up any kind of a gap could, and I've shared this with the Administrator Schmidt as well, could certainly be defrayed with that annual contribution. So there's a means to get there. I think those of you who know me, I'm very budget conscious, kind of kind of sure myself a budget hawk, and have a decent background in mathematics that I got from libraries, actually, when I was a kid. I just was fascinated with numbers. But I think we can allay those fears in the future, so you know, you have my commitment to that end. And I also wanted just to say that, you know, the Board, we have five key goals in the county. I'm just gonna read them quickly. One's, I'm gonna read them in a different order than they are. Number one, the key one here, build public trust through good government, build a strong infrastructure, ensure safe, healthy, and secure communities, and grow a vibrant economy. And libraries really is at the core of all that. But the other one here, the fifth one, honor and utilize and promote and invest in our natural resources. And one bullet under that is by 2026, a 10% increase in food production and food production acres from agricultural land in Clackamas County. And, you know, we have, Clackamas County has a background in agriculture, and you've probably heard some commentary here last week, for example, about the seed library. And that touches, all five, all five of these key goals are impacted in a positive way by moving forward with the last of the two, of the libraries, the two libraries in Clackamas County that need that construction and meeting library standards and so forth. So it's with great pride, actually, that I know that we are, we're fulfilling really our mission, and that we identified some key ones. I think we ought to really be proud of the work we did and realize that in entirety, this touches all five of those key goals. So that concludes what I wanted to say there, and whenever the Chair, you're ready for a motion, I'm ready to make a motion, if you like.
Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I've been thinking about this, and I don't know how doable it is, but I would like to see if it's something we can investigate legally and otherwise. But yes, we fund libraries. Have we ever thought about the possibility, and if it was an opportunity to come together to build what we might call a Clackamas County Library Foundation, whose purpose would be to help out with some of these maintenance and external costs? It's just an idea. I don't know the legality of it. I don't know how it would be framed or formed. I'm assuming it would include all the libraries across the district. I'm assuming you'd have to probably talk to the district, to the librarians as well as their bosses, you know? But I'm wondering if there aren't some creative solutions, and it may not be possible, but I've never quite understood why we didn't have a larger group of library supporters, friends of the libraries that actually can help fundraise and do foundational work to make sure maintenance happens and to make sure programs happen. So colleagues, I'm sorry if I sprung this on you. It wasn't because I'm trying to spring anything on anybody. It's just because I'm trying to think thoughtfully about what your contribution as citizens could be as really going out and continuing to fundraise in a meaningful way to make sure that the sustainability of our system stays intact. So colleagues, if you don't mind, at least I'll look into it. I don't know if it's a good idea, I don't know if it's a bad idea, I don't even know if it's possible. But with all your energy in the room, I think there might be a there there. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Schrader, you have mentioned that before. I don't remember where, because we have so many conversations.
Oh, yeah.
I'm perfectly fine with that. I do think it should be community-led, however, because it's going to be community-funded. And I do not see this Board funding another piece of libraries beyond what we're already doing, unless there's a library district, correct, Gary? And what is the millage rate on that?
I don't know offhand, no.
Five or 10 cents. Does anybody know? Okay. Unless the community members want to make an adjustment in your current millage rate, and you're saying yes, Grover, I'm gonna remember that. And so what we could do is, if you wanted to go out, and by the way, I think it would have to be countywide, and then we would be collecting monies separately for the maintenance going forward on that too. However, that would be separate. So there's all these ideas out there that we could do on this, but any way you can help relieve Clackamas County of the burden of going forward on the maintenance of this really needs to have a serious discussion, and there's several ways that we can do that.
And thank you, Chair, because I believe, like you do, it's not us doing it. This would have to be a community-led initiative from all your friends of the library, and how that would work, and how you would work with your local librarians to do that. I absolutely agree with you, it's gotta be community-led. But I'd be willing to see if we could work on a framework that was community-led by all of you, so. Not, county can't take on any of our constrained environment.
Any other further comments on this? Commissioner Savis? I believe you want to make a motion.
Sure. And before I do that, I just want to just mention one thing. There are several people that would have liked to have been here today who cannot make it because of multiple reasons, including people have jobs. But in particular, there's one particular individual that's got significant history that goes back into the '80s and '90s, when there was a library levy in place that got rolled into Measure 50 and became part of the permanent tax rate, which talks about really the history of the community's investment when they voted for that into the investment, as well as the library district that got put into place 3-310 in 2008. So there have been commitments made, and those are still on the tax rolls today, so.
Before you make your motion, I have asked the staff to do some research on that through our taxation and assessment office, to see if that is indeed true, if it happened, when it happened, and what the financial impact to that was. And they are currently researching that. Obviously, it's gonna take a little bit. So go ahead and make your motion.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And the last thing I wanted to mention, just say, is as I mentioned to you Tuesday morning after the Library District Advisory Committee meeting on Monday evening, that on a different note, somewhat related to this, but not certainly directly, that there, you know, that there is some work to do that got halted as a result of COVID, which speaks to really all of this stuff. So there's, I think a lot of these, if you, once I have the opportunity to share with the Board where we're headed, I think it might allay a number of your concerns. Every one of them, frankly, I think can be allayed in knowing that there's a community effort to resolve some of these lingering issues about maintenance and cost. So with that, Chair, I will make my motion. I move to direct the county administrator to fill the remaining balance on the construction of the Gladstone and Oak Lodge libraries with a one-time cash payment from the Clackamas County General Fund with the exact amount contingent upon the determination of the final construction cost.
Mr. Schrader.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis has moved that we direct the county administrator to fill the remaining balance on construction of the Gladstone and Oak Grove libraries with a one-time cash payment from the Clackamas County General Fund with the exact amount contingent upon the determination of final construction costs. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion on this? Commissioner West.
Let's get her done.
Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you kindly. And you're out of order. No. Just a little humor, right? Gary, what's next?
Next, our two public hearings. First is, oh, actually, Chair, would you please convene as the Service District Number Five Street Lighting District?
Folks, we have a public hearing we need to go through, and then we will have public comments come up after that. In case there's anybody in the room who doesn't know what the regular order of our business is, I see people are leaving. Thank you for coming and your support today, but we will get to your comments. Just want to let you know that. Okay. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as Service District Number Five Street Lighting for Public Hearing Number One.
Thank you. So this public hearing is approved, first item, approval of a board order forming an assessment area 20-22 Ridge Crest Court within Clackamas County Service District Number Five. Current combined value for the six-lot petition is $282 a year. Funding is through ratepayers. No county general funds are involved. Dan Johnson, Director of Transportation and Development, and Wendy Correll, who's a Service District Specialist with the Lighting District, are here to present. Go ahead.
Thank you. We're a little bit rough. Just got to run in here. My apologies.
That's all right.
Chair Smith, Commissioners, we are here just to give you a quick introduction before Wendy takes us over. Basically, so one of the many programmatic functions within DTD is street lighting. We provide street lighting throughout the community of Clackamas County for a certain number of cities. We do that through a couple of different reasons and methods, one of which is through capital construction projects where we build streetlights. Second is through development review, when we condition those improvements to be done. And last but not least is through petitions. So you're going to hear hearings today regarding petitions and then some that were required as conditions of approval for development. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Wendy, and she can run through this first issue with you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Wendy Correll, and I'm representing Clackamas County Service District Number Five. It is the district responsible for street lighting in the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County and also in the city of Happy Valley. A little background, street lighting, as Dan kind of indicated, but street lighting is requested through petition process. And in order for them to install the streetlights through the petitioning process, the petition must have at least 51% or more of the property owners in that proposed area. Ultimately, the neighbors received 83% of the property owners signing the petition. So 83% support. This area for your consideration is Area 20-21. This is six-lot petition, and it's on southeast Ridge Crest Court in the city of Happy Valley. We're looking to install Cobra Lights, also known as Leo Tech, and those are going to be on existing wood poles. And these will come under Rate B at $47 per tax lot each year. Prior to scheduling this hearing today, the Street Lighting District notified all of the affected property owners in writing that this public hearing would be taking place, and they could review and talk about next steps to the process. There were no remonstrances received on any of these areas, and that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer. Any questions you may have?
Thank you, Wendy. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the presenters on this? Seeing none, I will now open the meeting for public testimony on this particular topic only, the Street Lighting District. Is there anybody in the room who wishes to testify on the Street Lighting District? Thelma Hagan-Miller, would you please come forward?
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. I just want to say that I was part of an effort to get streetlights on the unincorporated area of McLaughlin Boulevard several years ago. Wendy could tell you when that happened. But every time I drive at night, in the wintertime particularly, on McLaughlin, I say thank you to all the property owners that signed the petition. We did get, I think we got about 60% of the property owners, and I just want to publicly say thank you to them and thank you to the lighting district. Thank you.
Thank you. That is important note that you make about driving at night. I think we all sometimes run into challenges on that. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I just want to just build on that a little bit. This is one of the great programs, LIDs, Local Improvement Districts have, I think that's what Thelma was speaking to. I've been part of two of them where the citizens took it upon themselves to petition and work hard to advocate their, whether it's a neighborhood or a business district like McLaughlin, to tax themselves to light the particular communities or boulevards for safety for others. So, you know, the communities, I always take pride in the communities that actually take that initiative and put it upon themselves to pay for those improvements as well as a number of other things. So just part of being part of a community, that community responsibility. So I want to just, many people to thank that aren't here today, actually, that did that. So just great work with staff and happy to see these things every year happen as we annex more and more of the district and people are taxing themselves for the safety of their community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further comments? Tony, do you have anybody on Zoom who would like to comment on this?
At this time, I do not have anyone registered on this topic. If you would like to testify on this hearing, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Chair Smith, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move to approve the board forming assessment area 20-22 within Clackamas County Service District Number Five.
Second.
Commissioner West has moved, we approve the board order forming assessment area 20-22 within Clackamas County Service District Number Five. Commissioner Savis has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Gary, what's next?
All right. You're still meeting as the Service District Number Five. The second public hearing is also for assessment area changes. There are 10 of them. I'm just going to read the highlights quickly of each one. None of these are funded with county general funds. They are all funded through ratepayers. Item one is for assessment area 18-20. It's a two-lot partition costing $94 a year. Item two, assessment area 3-21. It is a three-lot petition, partition at $141 a year. Item three is area 44-19, Chloe Rose Creek area. It's a 15-lot subdivision at $975 a year. Item four, area 35-18, senior care and retail. Estimated 1,811 linear feet of frontage. Cost is $2,100 a year. Item five, area 27-19, Goodwill Retail Store. Estimated 1,100 feet of frontage. Cost $1,276 a year. Item six, area 28-21, Good Shepherd, 143-unit affordable housing unit. Estimated 957 feet of frontage. Cost $1,110 a year. Item seven, area 49-17, heirloom 300-unit apartment and mixed-use. 1,103 linear feet of frontage. Cost $1,280 a year. Item eight, area 24-18, two-lot partition. Cost $454 a year. Item nine, area 34-18, Heritage Crest. Nine-lot subdivision. Cost $2,043 a year. Item 10, area 8-21, Eagle Landing condominiums. 12 units. Cost $227 a year. Again, all funded through ratepayers. No county general funds. Welcome back, Dan and Wendy.
Thank you so much. Just some clarity for the public that might be watching. There's a lot of numbers that just got thrown at you. All these numbers that we can affirm to this board are based off the current adopted rate schedule. That rate schedule differs in different areas. So for example, if it's residential, it's per lot. If it's commercial, you heard the words linear frontage. So those are factors in determining how it's applied and the type of lighting applied. So with that, I'll turn it over to Wendy to do a deeper dive.
Good morning again. So I'm Wendy Correll for Street Lighting in Service District Number Five. Street lighting is also required through conditions of approval for all new residential, commercial, industrial, and multifamily developments within the urban area of Clackamas County and in the city of Happy Valley. There are 10 street lighting areas, as indicated. Three are in the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County, and seven are in the city of Happy Valley. Prior to scheduling this hearing today, the Street Lighting District notified all the property owners in writing that the public hearing was taking place, and they get to discuss these items. No remonstrances were received on any of the 10 areas. And that pretty much concludes this presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. The Commissioners have any questions on this? I will now open a public hearing. Is there anybody in the room who wishes to testify on this particular lighting district funding? Seeing none. Tony, is there anybody online?
Chair Smith, I do not have anyone registered at this time. If you would like to speak on this public hearing, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received.
Do I have a person in the back? Madam, please come forward. Would you please come forward and speak into the microphone? You will need to introduce yourself, state your area of residence, and you will have three minutes. And don't be afraid to be loud at us.
My name is Nancy Ferris, and I'm a resident of Ridge Crest Court that you have just approved the streetlight for. My husband was instrumental in bringing that about. But I came up because I wanted to thank Wendy for, I mean, she stuck with us and got this project okayed, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you for your comments. I know staff and Wendy especially appreciates this, and it is a very nice amenity to a lot of these neighborhoods.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Tony, is there anybody else? Probably not. Tony, is there anybody else online who would like to testify on this?
Madam Chair, at this time, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay. Commissioners, I will entertain a motion, and it's very specific in your script.
Your Honor, I move, we approve the board orders forming assessment areas 18-20, 03-21, 44-19, 35-18, 27-19, 28-21, 49-17, 24-18, 34-18, and 08-21 within Clackamas County Service District Number Five.
Second.
Commissioner West has moved, we approve forming of the assessment areas he just listed. I'm not going to say that again, in Street Lighting District Number Five. And Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Savis?
Director Savis, aye.
Director West?
Aye.
Director Schrader?
Aye.
Director Shaw?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as Service District Number Five Board and convene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Next is the Consent Agenda for Regular County Business. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Elected officials, item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Human Resources, item one, ratification of the 2022-2025 labor agreement with the Federation of Parole and Probation Officers for Representative Employees. Total value is $13,889,751 for three years. Funding is through state and other funds, including $1,944,565 in budgeted county general funds. Technology Services, item one, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Sandy for construction, operation, and maintenance of Internet services on the Clackamas Broadband Exchange Fiber Network. Total value is $2,155,680 over 10 years. Initial funding through county ARPA funds allocated to Clackamas Broadband Exchange, then self-sufficient from customer fees. No county general funds are involved. Resolutions Services, item one, approval of an amendment increasing funding from a grant agreement with Oregon Housing and Community Services Department for mediation services to manufactured home park communities. Amendment value is $50,000. Grant value is increased to $64,000 for two years. Funding is through Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. No county general funds are involved. Disaster Management, item one, approval of Amendment Two, increasing funding for Citizen Core Equipment from a grant agreement with the City of Portland for the 2021 Urban Area Security Initiative Grant. Amendment value is $21,590. Grant value is increased to $623,465 for two years. Funding through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services, item one, approval of a federal sub-recipient blueprint grant with Cascade Aid Project, Ethsir's Pantry for Senior Nutrition. Grant value is $108,000 for one year. Funding is through the Older Americans Act. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a county-based services revenue agreement with Health Share of Oregon for Behavioral Health Care and Services. Agreement value is $4,184,447 for one year. Funding is through the Oregon Health Plan. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you very much. Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item off the consent agenda? I will entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Shaw has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Water Environment Services Board. Tony, or Gary?
You're now meeting as a Water Environment Services Board. This is the Consent Agenda for Water Environment Services. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Water Environment Services, one item, approval of a sponsorship agreement with SOL for waterway cleanup events. Agreement value is $150,000 for five years. Funding through Water Environment Services Surface Water Operating Funds. No county general funds are involved.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Tony, please call the poll.
Motion.
I need a motion, don't I?
I move for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Shaw has moved for approval of the Water Environment Services Consent Agenda. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Please call the poll.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I will now adjourn as a Water Environment Services Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Up next is public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes, and comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take in-person testimony first. I have an entire stack of cards here, and I understand that there are different topics, and I anticipated many more people testifying that are in the room. So I'm going to divide it up into the three topics mentioned. And I'm going to start with the CTO boring and the Bull Run filtration project. And I'm going to start with those cards first. Suzanne Cordier, is that how you say? Come on up. Please introduce yourself. And Chris, come on up. Chris? I have two cards for Chris Quarter and Suzanne Quarter. Would you like to come up? I don't know. I just have a card. You don't have to.
Okay, Jen or Laura. Okay.
Laura, I have a separate card for you. Laura, I have a separate card for you.
Yeah.
We'll let her finish. Usually, these two like to do it together, but evidently.
He doesn't want to be by me today.
Mr. Quarter does not want to be heard today. I have to say, that's a smart husband. Right? Madam, please introduce yourself and begin.
I'm Suzanne Quarter from Boring area, and I'm here today representing with a small group of people the CTO, Community Planning Organization, and the Pleasant Home Neighborhood Association. And so we're representing a much larger group than just the five of us. I brought the packets for each of you, and I'm going to go through that. When we were here last time, the commissioners and legal counsel also said they didn't know a whole lot about the project and wanted more information. So we're basically bringing the information about what's happening with Portland Water Bureau's request. It's in Multnomah County, but it's going to impact Clackamas. So we're really talking about what's happening to Clackamas today. So the first document I brought is the large stapled one, and that's from the Multnomah County Rural Fire Board District. And this is their recommendation after research of sending denial to Multnomah County land use for the project. So that's what they're recommending because they cannot support the project because of the size and their inability to do it. I have taken those documents to Sandy Fire and to Clackamas Fire and given them to them too, so they have it. And so basically, we're just trying to let people know that the project is bigger than the community can probably handle. So from there, I'm going to go on this week. Portland Water Bureau put in a land use request for Clackamas Planning and Zoning for a use on some, what do you call it, exclusive farm use. They're trying to put roads in. I talked about that last time. Roads in that would enter onto Bluff Road near the Oregon Trails Academy School. And so if you turn to the last two pages that I gave you, there's a kind of a funny map, and I unfortunately wrote the wrong street name on the wrong street, and I changed that. But the two buildings on the right half of the page are Oregon Trail School. They're divided by a road. There's the original building, and then they added a second building. And you can see where Bluff Road comes and curves right there. 362nd comes up, and those two black lines that I drew with a marker pen show where they're actually going to, the Portland Water Bureau is asking to put road access. And so if you live around there, you know how hard and difficult and crazy that intersection is. So we're very concerned about the safety that's going on out there. In fact, if you flip to the back page, just this week, there was an accident there that ran through the fence at the Oregon Trails Academy, and I took pictures. The one picture in the top left shows the children have to walk back and forth multiple times during the day across Proctor from one side of the campus to the other side. And you can see the road, the car, truck, whatever it was, went right off the road and through the school fence next to their parking lot, and that's partly their playfield. So what I'm asking, I guess, is that you really pay attention to this land use request that has been put in. And after the land use, or maybe it's already happening now, they're going to go to roads because they have to get roads permission from Clackamas County to, you know, attach to Bluff. I don't know how you say that, but come out onto Bluff. And they want to do two of them right near that intersection. And the cars go along Bluff easily at 50 miles an hour sometime, which is probably what happened to that car. Just couldn't make that big curve. So please pay attention. Look at what's happening in the county. It's happening now. It's not something that they're going to notify you of, but it's a very dangerous intersection. Anyway, I think that's kind of it. That's a K through 12 school. We brought the letter from the principal before. She does not want it. Anyway, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. You've given the board a very large packet as we sat down, and we have not had time to read it.
Sure, I understand.
Obviously, but I'm going to have Commissioner Schmidt talk about this because I understand we did get a land use application in. Can you talk about that?
Thank you, Chair Smith. Yes, so our staff in Transportation and Development this week received that application. You're absolutely correct. They haven't even gone through the process yet to review it or look at it in any detail. Staff will give you an update, commissioners, as soon as that application is complete to let you know. This, of course, is a land use process, as you know, so normally the commissioners are not involved. There was a land use appeal process with a hearings officer, if that goes to that level. But we will brief you before any action is taken by staff. But yes, it indeed just came in this week. Hasn't even been reviewed or processed yet. But we will update you, commissioners, before it moves on in the process.
Yeah, I just want to read something that you provided for us. It's a resolution from the Multnomah County Rural Fire Protection District, or just before that, signed by Michael McKeel Chair. And in it, it says, whereas Multnomah County Comprehensive Land Use Plan states, "Strategy 11 dot 17 dash two, encourage police, fire protection, and emergency response providers to review land use proposals for, among other factors, as determined by the agency." So it sounds like, Gary, that's going to, those agencies will have a say in this going forward as well. It's just not the Board of County Commissioners. I'm sure that staff is on this, doing their due diligence to gather as much information as necessary and possible before we bring it to this board. It has not been scheduled yet. It's going to take some investigation and research before we come forward on this. But we do have to review it, correct, Gary?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, up next is, Laura Belson, would you like to come up now?
Hello. It's my first time here. I am a parent in the community, and I'm also concerned about safety. That's what I'm here to talk about today.
Would you please introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. My name is Laura Belson. I live in Boring. And yes, I'm here to speak about safety. I'm a parent in the community, a school age student, and a preschooler. You know, we had heard, actually, that one of your goals is about ensuring safety for the community, so hopefully this fits in. So I have some facts to read to you about the project. A lot of these are contained in that very well-researched report that you were just reading from, that the Rural Fire Protection District 10 put together and approved. So, you know, our community's safety will suffer if this plant is permitted to be constructed. There will be over five years of construction, and that will cause 100,000 extra-heavy trucks hauling everything from concrete to rock to excavation spoils to overwhelm our rural local roads. That will cause serious damage to road surfaces that are already deteriorated. Poor roads with heavy traffic increase accidents. There will be conflicts between slow-moving farm equipment, school buses, pedestrians, bicyclists, and other local traffic. Accidents on rural roads are two times more likely to result in fatalities than those on urban roads. You know, as we just heard, there's a school right there, and there's school buses that use that intersection from all three directions. It's a very complicated intersection. Construction trucks will bring heavy traffic past the schools, and a lot of these roads don't typically have shoulders. Slow-moving farm vehicles carrying nursery stock and equipment, and large, fast-moving trucks carrying construction materials will have trouble sharing the road safely. There will be myriad traffic delays, detours, and road closures that will increase response times for fire and emergency services. So that's, you know, just the five-plus years of construction. But during operation, there will be many trucks continuing, over 1,000, you know, per year, hauling hazardous materials and waste sludge from the plant. And those will be on our local roads, even in snowy and icy conditions, year in and year out for good. You know, I was attending the Portland Water Bureau Neighbor Meeting, and there was a neighbor that reported a tanker truck, you know, that had to be out on the road during that crazy ice storm we had recently that tipped over in her yard, and it was going towards an existing Portland Water Bureau facility. So, you know, best management practices, training, and high-tech equipment cannot eliminate this risk. Oh, I'm already done.
Please just state your conclusion.
Okay, sorry. Anyway, I actually have a very question. I'm not sure it's for you.
Go ahead, ask the question.
I'm just trying to understand the land use process and how the commissioners can help us. You know, we have a list. I've been involved with the communications. We have a list of 250 people. We're going to be sending out a flyer to 1,000-plus, and we want to know how we can make our voices to you guys known and what your power is to help us in this land use process.
Gary, would you like to explain the land use process on this?
Yes, so our staff reviews applications. They go to a land use hearings officer who makes the decision. So the board does not make the decision. It's a land use hearings officer. There's public testimony, just like today, where any member of the public can give feedback on the proposal. Then the land use officer makes the decision. If there's an appeal, help me, Stephen, I think it goes to the state, right? The Land Use Appeals Board, LUBA?
LUBA, Land Use Board of Appeals.
Yep, so it's really the board. The board can give their views and strong opinions, but they are not the decision-maker in a land use matter. Obviously, they'll give feedback to staff, but it goes through a land use hearings officer. That's a contractor, not a county employee. So you'll have a chance to testify when that time comes and give your opinions. And if you disagree, then others can file, you or others can file an appeal, and it will go to the state.
And what could the commissioners help us with in that? Or they can just make their opinions at the hearing?
They can testify themselves if they wish. They can share their opinions with staff. They can obviously make their statements, but it's not a decision of the board.
Stephen, explain to me that it's quite problematic for any commissioner to use their undue influence over a independent deciding body, correct, as who would be reviewing this?
If any commissioner were to testify before the hearings officer, it would be in their own personal capacity. It wouldn't be that of a county commissioner, because what you have done, what prior boards have done, you've delegated this responsibility to the hearings officer, like you do with animal control, land use, a variety of other functions, code enforcement. Those would typically come to the board, but you have said, we do not want to be quasi-judicial in that capacity. We want to assign that to an independent hearings officer.
Is your microphone on?
It is.
Okay, it's on. I keep getting the light from the guy in the window over there. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And it's just not this land use issue. It is all land use issues that come before Clackamas County. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, just real quickly, and I say this with experience of being on a water board and also being on a wastewater, sanitary district wastewater board, and they're often cited, especially wastewater plants are cited right in neighborhoods. So I've got a lot of experience with neighborhood issues when a plant's either being rehabilitated or built, so on. I think in this case, it'd be really important, based on your questions, that our staff at least give them some kind of ABCs, the 101, on the public process that we're talking about here today. So your efforts are directed at the best place, so you can make the best testimony at the hearing, when this happens. But it is mostly staff-process-driven to make sure that all your concerns and all your opportunities are met, and the public can speak, and so forth. So it's not us, per se. It's really our staff that do that for the elements that relate to Clackamas County, not the Multnomah County piece.
Right, yeah. Sure, the roads.
Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thanks. And should I follow up with you to get that information, or?
Sure, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner West?
Being the new guy here, I have a question for Mr. McCorr. Is there situations, I guess my previous experience, and this is not a city, I'm very aware of that, that we could call up a decision as a board? Is there a situation where the board ever calls up a land use issue and extreme situations and intervenes? Is that part of the process at all? And I'm not saying we would do that, or that's even common. I just, I'm new, so I'm asking.
It's happened before. Rare occasions. And there are situations where I think this board does have jurisdiction perhaps over the determination of the planning director. If she or he is asked to interpret something, I think an appeal of that might come to the board. I would have to double-check, but it's unusual, Commissioner West, that the board would assume quasi-judicial responsibility for something that it already has delegated to the hearings officer. It is possible, though. You have that authority.
And just as we learn how to do this, and I learned how to do this better, and being a new commissioner, I would love to dive into that process a little further with you.
Sure.
So I'm going to caution any board member thinking that we're going to do this. I'm 99.999% certain that we would not do that. Once we do this for one land use decision, you're going to open a floodgate of every person out there who disagrees with a land use decision, whether for or against. So we will not be doing that. Just letting you know.
Just asking the process question.
Thank you very much. Up next, Paul Willis.
He's going to go last. I'm sorry, Chairman.
Jen Hart, please come forward. State your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
I'm Jennifer Hart, owner of Black Gold Springs LLC. I lease nursery property to Surface Nursery. I am CPO, Vice Chair. Anyways, I wanted to talk a little bit about the EFU property where this project is going on. You know, as earlier, it was discussed, EFU is very, very important. EFU land is decreasing instead of increasing. Surface Nursery does not know this application has been submitted. They have not been notified. We just told them in the last 24 hours. This project is 30% of Surface Nursery's business. It is also going to affect multiple nurseries in Clackamas County and farmers in Clackamas County. You know, I recently learned about the value of one acre of EFU land to a nurseryman. They can plant 10,0325 trees an acre at $22 a tree. And that's, you know, that was the rate a year and a half ago. This project is over 99-year project. That is over $22 million of taking out one acre of land to nurseries. I'm also very, very concerned about, this plant is going through, well, it's close to the Johnson Creek headwaters. If I wanted to put a water feature quarter of a mile to half a mile, I wouldn't be allowed. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, for coming forward. Now, Mr. Paul Willis, would you like to come up?
Quarter's going next, if you don't mind.
Whatever.
Because he's going to wrap it up.
Chris Quarter, please come forward.
Sorry for the confusion.
I just take the cards as they come.
I'm sorry. I'm Chris Quarter.
Please introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
I'm Chris Quarter. I live in Clackamas County, homeowner. I am going to talk about the noise effects on learning and teacher strategies. If you want to have that in front of you, it's going to take me a very short time. You'll see why in a minute. I did want to address Commissioner Savas's comments. We're very aware of the different avenues that we have available to us to present our information, and we're pursuing those different avenues. This is just one body that we're, we're not neophytes to this. We need all the help we can get. I say that humbly, but we have a lot of strategies that we're working on because we think this is a really important topic. Okay, so first of all, I'm going to talk about noise effects on learning because where they want to put their entrance is 50 feet from this school. That in itself, just using our common sense, tells you some things about these folks, the Portland Water Bureau, and why they would do that. But anyway, if you want to just look at that sheet, do you have that in front of you? I highlighted this yellow.
Yes, we do have that, and I did read it. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm just going to, you know, I'm just going to, I just want to say this one thing. Experimental, oh, this is also put out by, you know, the Center for Cognitive Science, Cognitive Development, and so on, by a university in Germany. You can go after the meeting, and in 15 minutes, you'll find easily 10 studies. You can go after the meeting, and in 15 minutes, you'll find easily 10 studies that show that noise does affect student learning. I tried to look for one that said, "No, noise doesn't affect," there are no such things. Every study shows that noise, whether it's trucks, airplanes, or construction, does affect them. I think I'll stop there and say, "I won't read that." This one certainly found that. I love their statement at the bottom, "Policymakers responsible for noise abatement should be aware of the potential impact of environmental noise on children's development." It's not all on you, but you probably are going to have some, as you scrutinize it thoroughly, you are probably going to have some way that you will be able to express your comments and your opinions on this. So you're going to have 100 trucks trying to enter in there 50 feet from the school, you will have more congestion, that's more noise, and it does adversely affect the students and their learning. Here's one other thing I want to point out, I don't know if you know that area, some of you do. The school sits here, let's say, they're looking straight across at this 100-acre facility. There are no trees, there are no buildings, there are no hills, it's a straight shot right to their proposed facility. They're going to do pile driving, you know how noisy that is?
Thank you very much.
They're going to have construction, and that noise is going to affect these kids in an adverse way.
We appreciate you coming forward, sir.
They cannot mitigate that, there's no way they can mitigate that. Thank you.
Paul Willis, you're up next. Please introduce yourself, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name's Paul Willis, I'm a resident of Carpenter Lane. Earlier, you heard testimony from individuals here who pointed out the almost certain negative byproducts from the Portland, City of Portland's plans to build 100-acre, $1.5 billion mega-industrial water treatment plant, and on high-valued farmland. A complex at the Portland Water Bureau is boasting to be the biggest in the United States, and potentially a tourist attraction, the likes that we've never seen in this area. Metro may even establish a bus line to and from the project to encourage visitors, as we know how public transportation brings with it both the good and the bad, as the light rail corridor has helped the drug traffic flourish in the Portland area. Commissioners, as you've heard, we are concerned with protecting our exclusive farmland-use-only high-valued farmland, also with area safety, both personal and vehicular, and student learning. As with other items mentioned, in particular, safety is a big concern. And you heard that the Gresham's Rural Fire District Number 10 studied and evaluated the impact of the Portland project, what it would have on their services that are required in the area. And the board concluded that the adequate farm, to provide adequate fire and emergency services, it couldn't be provided by them. So this pushes the responsibility onto Clackamas to help service, the project that the Portland Water Bureau is proposing, and during the operation period, and also during the five years of construction, should accidents and emergency services be needed. And when we think about it, five years of constructions, and as been mentioned, we're talking hundreds, multiple hundreds of truck traffics a day, to move over 1 million cubic yards of soil, to bring in various products for construction. Now, we just simply ask you to consider our concerns, scrutinize what is happening in your county by keeping appraised the Portland's demands or wishes as they go through the county's land use process, and that also, you intervene in your capacity for your constituents to ensure that everything is done for their best interest.
Thank you, Paul, for coming forward. You bring some very interesting information. Gary Schmidt, would you like to comment on this further?
Yes, so our county's Director of Transportation and Development, Dan Johnson, he oversees the planning division, he's a gentleman sitting right back there with the tie, he's happy to talk.
He's waving his hand, take a look at him.
He'll talk to any of you. He's happy to talk to the community members about the process, the hearings process, how you can interact, if you'd reach out to talk with him as soon as you're done with the meeting today. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate, and this is just really, really important, put your energies where they make the most difference. Put your energies to the people that are making the decision. I understand, we all understand and feel what you're talking about, it's not that we don't disagree at all. So, we are on to our second topic today, I think, has everybody spoken on this issue who wishes to today? Do you have anybody online for this?
Madam Chair, at this time, I do not have anyone registered on this topic. If there is anyone who would like to testify on the Portland Water Bureau project, please let me know. Madam Chair, I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. We're going to move on to another topic, we have a Maureen Granger, is she in the room? Madam, please come forward, introduce yourself, state your area of residence, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maureen Granger, I live in Happy Valley. I am speaking today on behalf of a petition that we put out about a week and a half ago, and I just learned about this about five days ago, where there is going to be considered a homelessness transition center or facility at 9717 Sunnyside Road. And I am speaking out against it at this moment, not that I'm against homelessness resolutions, but that we need to consider all of the ramifications that we could be experiencing with homelessness. It is a hotel or a motel that is very close to a strip mall. There are, as we know, all of us know, there are social work, there are security, there are other things, like, will there be a no-drug policy for this particular facility? How long will it take to refurbish this facility? How many dollars are needed to refurbish this facility? That, I believe I've seen the number that the county or the city of Oregon, I don't know the jurisdiction, but it will be a $15 million purchase. All of this seems to be a little, something that we need to consider, and those of us who are against it, we need to see a business plan, we need to see things that are very important for us to know, because homelessness is not just a quick and easy, put somebody in a room and feed them, and take care of them. This is a huge issue that I am asking, that January 31st is the cutoff for feedback. Am I correct in saying that? And if not, we need an extension for all of us on the side that may be against it to comment on this.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your comments. We do have a staff member, Claire Okiki, in the room that could possibly answer some more questions, however, thank you very much for coming forward. Martha Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, I think, from my experience with this, we've spent a lot of time working with our colleagues down in Lane County that have implemented these kinds of things. I think what we need to do to help people understand what we're doing is also to get a list of where this has already been implemented with other counties in our state. It's a program that they've come up with, and also, I've already connected with the National Association of Counties to get the list of how these have been implemented, not just here in our state, but across the United States. One of the things that's different about this is that they are what we call intentional communities, that once people are housed here, they get case management that's extremely So all of the behaviors that we fear that happens when we have homeless populations, dumpster diving, drug-taking, the garbage, those are things that people fear, and I understand why. But once, the data's showing that once you get them stabilized in a spot that has the appropriate wraparound services, those kinds of behaviors no longer plague the community. So I am more than willing to get as much data to everyone as possible. One of the successes, and I understand how you feel, because I've worked on, Commissioner Savis and I have worked on this project before, and one of the things I think that we need to have people either visit or be aware of is our Veterans Village. That was actually the same kind of intentional community that we pulled together. It was specifically for veterans. They have a place to stay, they have a place to get washed, they have a place to eat as a community. And we employ, I want to say, who do we employ, Gary? I remember it's the name of the group that does it, Do Good Malt-Noma. So these folks are constantly staffed and constantly monitored. The outcomes have been, and we had the same thing with the businesses surrounding, "What are you doing? Wait a minute, this isn't going to work." Oftentimes, they don't know they're there, we have a food bank set up right next to them, so people are actually getting that help. We have workforce opportunities, and interestingly enough, I'll make sure, I'll ask my, I'll ask my person, my policy advisor, to get the information to you, that actually, local businesses are now actually hiring people from the village to work in the local businesses. The other thing we did is we built housing up here in Oregon City specifically for veterans. So a number of them are being transferred out now to permanent supportive housing. So it isn't just about renting a place and having people there, it's just, that's not how it's done. We come up with these programs to make sure that the impacts that you fear the most are not going to impact your area and your community. So what we need to do is to talk to you directly, I'll be talking to Tom Ellis and one of his folks, David Imani, I'm going to hopefully be able to bring that information forward to them, because we understand, we truly understand how difficult this is for communities to accept, and we need to make the case to you that there have been successes that have not impacted the local community with the kinds of things you're most worried about. Okay?
Thank you.
So, thank you for, if you wouldn't mind giving us that opportunity, it would be great.
I need to interject, Claire, I would like you to come up forward, she's our, one of our housing advocate staff member who can answer some of these questions. But I need to say, I need to leave, I'm going to pass the gavel to Vice Chair Commissioner Mark Shaw. I had an appointment scheduled for county business outside, off the campus, knowing that, you know, we have not had anybody show up to testify all month. And lo and behold, we have a packed room. So the rest of the commissioners will handle the rest of this business meeting, as always, reach out, very appreciative of people coming today. Commissioner Shaw, you have the gavel.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Oh, I'm here to answer any questions, if there are specific questions about Project Turnkey, or about community concerns about Project Turnkey.
Can you talk about how the facility may be secured in the conversations around that, considering its location on Sunnyside?
Yeah, so there, we did walk that site a number of times, and I know you all are going to have the opportunity to visit there as well. We are discussing the possibility of additional fencing, it's fenced on three sides, and that, we're discussing the need to reinforce that fencing. We are discussing 24/7 security, cameras, lighting externally. There will be onsite property management to assist, there's two parties in this, there's the residents that are living, or that are staying in the property, as well as the neighbors, and the, it's pretty much entirely a business district, so they're commercial neighbors, they have concerns, and they want to ensure that there is no impact to their businesses. And so the property management would, property management will assist both the residents in the property, as well as the businesses surrounding.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Can you speak to the type of population that will be housed there, and how that screening process happens?
Yes, so, in other counties around us, they have different facilities for different types of populations. In Clackamas County, we do not currently have an option like, a good option like this for most of the people who need housing here in our county. We do have a small shelter for domestic violence, and a small shelter for veterans that Commissioner Schrader spoke about, but for most people who need housing in the county, we do not currently have options for them. So therefore, this first, if this does come about at the current quality in sight, it would be the general population, that means that it could, those rooms could be available for the people who are most in need, and therefore, it might at one, and the stay would be approximately two months, depending on their need. So at one time, it might be a family with children, at the next time, it might be somebody who is escaping domestic violence, the next time, it might be a veteran, it might be somebody with a mental health condition, who is not, doesn't need to be at a higher level of care. So it would just be open for the people who need it the most.
All right, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Shaw, excuse me, so commissioners, this is not the, you have a policy session next Wednesday to talk about all this, Claire's here to answer the constituents' questions, and they were. Can public comment be extended? The answer is no. It is January 31st, because the state deadline for the due diligence is January 31st. Next Wednesday, February 1st, the board is having a 90-minute discussion on the program development of this turnkey potential site, so please stay tuned. The staff report will be published this afternoon, come back and hear that session, I don't want to put Claire on the spot here. So respectfully, commissioners, can you hold your further comments till next week? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Claire. Appreciate it. Looks like our next subject is libraries. Our first speaker is Mr. Grover Bornfeld, please come up, state your name and your residence, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. So I am Grover Jeffrey Bornfeld, and I am a 30-plus-year resident of Jennings Lodge, and we are more and more becoming part of the peninsula that is bounded by the Willamette River, the Clackamas River, and oatfield ridge, and there were so many people here today that represents that interworking community, that we could get the word out to that many people in the short notice, really talks to how that networking is beginning to work for the good. And so the next thing I want to say is thank you. I'm sorry, I waved to the chair on the way out, but really, thank you for, and Gary, thank you for an incredible summary, and thank you each for your parts to speak to what this opportunity is, this milestone. You know, there's going to be a brand-new, beautiful building in downtown, in the heart of Gladstone. Some of you need to Some of you need to go see, if you haven't, what they currently have and you have need to see what we currently have. So you can see, it's 30 years out of date, it is et cetera, it's substandard, yada, yada. So this is a chance to finally do that. But the part I want to point to is, the other library is going to be in a park that it doesn't exist as a park currently on the Concord site, next to the Concord, I don't want to name it, next to the Community Cultural Center with this brand-new library. It's going to be a hub of this peninsula that I'm speaking of. We don't have places we can meet currently. So, so that's, that's what y'all have set in motion and I really want to thank you for that. I also want to thank the countless thousands of volunteers, whether it's be the people who sit on boards, volunteers, or the people who help with phone trees or rides or go talk to their neighbors, et cetera. I really want to thank all of those people for all of those hours. I am so excited. I was in this room when several of you got sworn in. The, the feeling in that room, we need to can it because it's here now, but it isn't always here. So we just keep remembering that when we work together, we can accomplish so much more. It is truly, it's a pleasure in these moments. The rest of the time, I have to keep remembering this is where we want to be. And that's really what I want to say, just thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Gary, thank the staff, and thank the people because without, without those peeps, we would not be here and they are the drive it. And so I'll leave it at that with moments to spare. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bornfeld, for your advocacy for libraries. Our next speaker is Thelma Hagen-Miller. Ma'am, come up, state your name, residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Thelma Hagen-Miller. I am a resident of unincorporated Oak Grove, so you are my mayor and city commissioners. I want to thank you for taking the action that you did this morning on the libraries, the library funding. I would also like to address Martha and the idea that she's putting forth. We've already, as the advocates, been looking for ways to add amenities. We're just looking for a base buildings and amenities are things that make it the Cadillac of buildings, but we're looking to take on going for grants, going for donors, other things like that in the community. I've already got people out looking for that sort of thing. So that's kind of what you're alluding to, but first we need the buildings there so we can go forward with the whole project. And so, in closing, I would just like to ask Mr. Scholl, Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, ma'am.
To repeat what you said to us in the hallway.
Yes, ma'am. There are 434,000 residents in Clackamas County and 435,000 library advocates.
Thank you.
That's funny, but it's true. Thank you, Thelma. Our next speaker is Lisa Bentley. Please come up, state your name, your residence, and ma'am, you have three minutes.
My name is Lisa Bentley, Elizabeth Bentley. My family has been owners of property in Clackamas County since 1947. We are very proud of being a resident of Clackamas County. Today, thank you for your vote. I was on the first study force appointed by the BCC, I think it was back in 2013, with Ed Gronke in Gladstone to study the issue of what to do about the two libraries. Today, you have resolved the issue and I am so grateful. It's going to bring great pride to Clackamas County to have two public libraries bearing the name of Clackamas County. And I'm very pleased offered up work with Martha Schrader as a member of the group that has worked for so long on the library, the two libraries. We've talked about, as Thelma said, many ideas. We're ready to help. We want to do what we can to make this two library project shine. Thank you. I have so much admiration for all of you.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for your testimony this morning. Now, let me see if I get this name right. It looks like Lindy Elliott from Vineyard Road. She's gone? Okay. Then we have Evan Griffith. Evan Griffith?
He's a library board member for East Coast.
How about Chips Jangor? Come on up, sir. Good morning. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Chips Jangor and I'm, I'm from Fair Oaks Avenue in unincorporated Oak Grove. I haven't spoken to you folks for a while. Welcome, Commissioner West.
Thank you.
It's good to see a face up there, a face with a lot of enthusiasm. This is a very special day for many of us who have worked on this library for a long time. I had the honor of being the chair of the Clackamas County, or being on the board of the Clackamas County Library. And in 2017, I was the chair of the board during the time when this county, when our library almost got handed over to Gladstone. That was quite a time, most of us remember. We were able to keep that from happening mostly because of the kind of turnout that we had today in meetings here and in meetings all over. Lots of people expressed the fact that we wanted and needed to have our own library. I want to thank you so much for your actions today. I'm, I'm a library user, I read a lot of books and lots of my own contemporaries do and that's good and it's good we have a library. But what's really important is our kids. And what you've done is now you've given them a place to go because our library is not a track, our current library is not a great place for young people to go. We've been working on programs there for a long time, bringing young people in because this is the time, as you all know, when kids walk around with ubiquitous, ubiquitous cellphones in their faces. And we, it's time for them also, to give them an opportunity to, to read, give them an opportunity to learn about their history and learn about where they, they live. This is just, this is just thrilling and, and I, I came with a lot of other things to say because I didn't know what was going to happen today, but all I wanted to do is take this opportunity to thank you guys. Thank you, Gary, so much. And thank you, Commissioners, for making this possible. We're going to have a beautiful library. Lot of us now have the opportunity to go out and do things, just, just like we heard from, from Lisa and from, and from Thelma. There are opportunities for some of us to go out and hopefully raise, raise some additional funds till we can actually make this library into something really, really special for our community and you guys have made it possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jangor, for your testimony this morning. The last card I have is Deborah Bokowski. Deborah, you're gone? How about Jan Carruthers? Please come up, Jan. State your name and residence and you have three minutes.
Just quickly, I wanted to say, Jan Carruthers, Jennings Lodge, and I realized when that vote happened that not only was I applauding, but I was crying. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you all. Thank you, Gary, for all the wisdom and support and what it takes to, first of all, condense this crazy history, but it was so educational for everyone, for all of us to hear all the stages. And I too have lived in this community for 31 years. I want to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Savis, who is the only commissioner who lives in this district. And he has been, I voted for him when he went on the Water District. I mean, when he was just a businessman who said, okay, I'll step forward. Commissioner Schrader, who is always such a speaker on behalf of what the value is. If you come to our library, I do want to say something. People sometimes characterize our library as horrible, you know, it's like barely workable. It's not. It's something that has served us. But on a Saturday or a Sunday, when you see all the parents come with their little chicks of kids and try to squeeze them into the space that could be story hour or a class or where you, when you see our staff haul out the tables, move the kids' stuff to try to put a class into our, you know, so that we can learn how to save seeds or how to plant garlic or whatever it is. It has served us to within an inch of its life and so has our staff. So I want to thank the staff who has, since I first, there was a thermometer on the wall about eight or 10 years ago, trying to track the circulation out of our library to prove that we weren't big enough to save. And I by golly took out as many books as I could for the next two years to make that thermometer high enough, but so did everybody else. That's really all I want to say. You've done everything we hoped. We'll all enjoy the process of continuing to serve it, continuing to fund it. And there are already friends of, there's 501(c)(3)'s, there's the Oak Lodge Library Advocates and thanks to everyone who made this happen. And I also particularly want to thank Stephanie, I can't say her last name, Cruzenhauser, because if she's watching this, she was the most brilliant leader. Thank you all, every one of you, especially you, Paul.
Thank you, Jan.
Vice Chair Scholl, if I may, just, I want to just impress upon you that, that the divergent opinions about where the library is, the former divisiveness that was between the Gladstone community and the Jennings Lodge community and the Oak Lodge community, there has been so much work done by the community to bring a unified voice to us that we could get behind and understand. And the hours and the compromises and where we got, you know, my, my gratitude is to everyone, many of you who are not in this room today, but especially those who are here today and those who are, you know, I've been in contact with and we have all been in contact with and some of which we have not, but they have gone, they have done so much to get us to this point that, that just goes to show, I think it just demonstrates community. It really does.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners' office. That's the last card I have for public communication for people here. Clerk to the board, who do we have on line?
I will begin with Ruth Adkins. Ruth Adkins, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Vice Chair Scholl and Commissioners. My name is Ruth Adkins. I'm here on behalf of Kaiser Permanente and our multiple Sunnyside locations to voice our strong support for Project Turnkey and moving forward without delay. We've gone on the record already about this, but I just wanted to come before you all on one last time before public comment closes. Thank you for your leadership and urge you to move forward without delay to acquire this site and develop this program. So Kaiser Permanente is a close neighbor. We have a eye and a dental clinic kind of in the shopping center adjacent and then of course, our Sunnyside Medical Center is kitty corner on Sunnyside Road. We had voiced our support for Project Turnkey last fall when you were looking at other sites and we're really excited to reaffirm and deepen that support now that we are going to be close neighbors with this program. We're very excited to see this come forward, to be a crucial addition to the county's response to the homelessness crisis. We are here really understanding and hearing the concerns from some of the neighbors and other businesses, but we are confident that as this process moves forward, that those, we can work through that. I do want to clarify, we had asked for a good neighbor agreement and just to be clear, we see that as happening further down the road in this process. We're not expecting that to happen right now at the right time. We're confident we can come together with all the stakeholders to develop that. So thanks again and we also are very excited to look forward, look forward to collaborating with the county around care coordination for our vulnerable members and patients who may be served in this program. So thanks again for your leadership. Please move forward with Project Turnkey. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Ruth Adkins, and thank you to Kaiser Permanente for all you do for the people of Clackamas County. Tony, who's next?
Next, I have Elizabeth Gobel. Elizabeth, please state your name and area, area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Gobel. I have lived in the Oak Grove area for about 33 years and I, like so many before me, I really would like to thank you for supporting the libraries. They're essential, they're essential to me, they're essential to my family, to the community. You already know all that. I am very happy to see the process begin on creating a library foundation and I, I wanted to thank you again and also for, thank you for attending all of these endless, endless meetings. They, I know how hard that is and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Tony?
That is the end of my registered list. If there is anyone else who would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature and I will call on you in the order received. Mr. Vice Chair, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay, if that's the end of our people who want to speak, we'll close the public communication portion of this meeting and move on. Administrator Schmidt, what is next?
Next Vice Chair is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to use my time to share good news about the good work of our county employees. Today, I'd like to share some examples with you. First, from our Central Communications or CCOM 911 Department, our call takers and several dispatchers are being recognized for their efforts with what's called the Chain of Survival Award. That is when quick thinking and coordination among 911 public safety responders and bystanders of the public bystanders results in saving a life through CPR and/or using an AED defibrillator. It is, the specific incidents happened at Camby Fred Meyer's. Last month, there was a cardiac arrest by the member of the public in the store. The defibrillator was used and our 911 staff was instrumental in saving a person's life. In particular, thanks to our CCOM employees, Carrie Stidham, Tara Ashbo, Jordan Van Dyke, Lindsay Nicholson and Tammy Abernathy, all worked together to help save a person's life. And that's just one of the great examples our employees do every day. Next, we have a law library at Clackamas County, did you all know that, Commissioners? And a local attorney recently needed help with researching key legal terms for an upcoming case and our county law librarian, assistant librarian, Bob Cooper, saved the day. The attorney wrote to Bob, you are- The attorney wrote to Bob, "You are absolutely miraculous. Thank you. This is just what I was looking for. No need to continue digging. You are so very helpful. I wish that I had a place in my briefing to acknowledge all of the assistance you provide when we are doing statutory construction and interpretation." So thank you for the comment, and thank you to Bob Cooper, our county employee who helped make that happen, for the local legal community. Finally, a, members of the public used our eviction prevention mediation program, which is offered through our Resolution Services Program here at the county. This is a statewide program that funds mediation services for parties experiencing housing-related conflict. These members of the public wrote to us, "We are so grateful for the help of Abby Bowman," she's an employee in Resolution Services, "we were scared and unsure if we could get any help, and if there was help, what steps did we need to take? Abby not only talked to the property management on our behalf, but she gently guided us with all the whos, whats, and wheres. An absolutely huge blessing for us." So thank you to Abby and all the Resolution Services team for their excellent work. That is my update for today, Vice Chair Scholz.
Yes, thank you, Administrator Schmidt, and thank you to all the staff from CCOM, Law Library, and Resolution Services for all you do for the people of Clackamas County. Now it's time for Commissioner Communications, and Commissioner Schrader, will you please go ahead?
Well, thank you. First, let me thank my colleagues yesterday for taking care of our preliminary budget discussion. I knew I could not make it because I was basically at the meeting that included our Columbia Willamette Workforce Collaborative Quality Jobs Initiative. And that is a coalition of three of our workforce boards, that is our own Clackamas Workforce Partnership. It also includes our Portland neighbors, and it also includes the workforce board from Washington State. And one of the things that we reviewed yesterday was what we call the Quality Jobs Council and the Quality Job Initiative. So essentially, what we did was get together and have a report on what brings clarity to the conversations on job quality in the region, which will serve as a workforce development boards to focus their programs, offerings to job seekers and businesses, as well as partnerships with employers and community-based organizations. Just some of the quick points was self-sufficiency wages, safe working conditions, and worker engagement, predictable hours, comprehensive benefits, accessible hiring and onboarding practices, and training and advancement opportunities. So I will be glad to send you the entire report. All of these pieces I mentioned, such as self-sufficiency wages, also has strategies associated with it. And I think one of the things that we do well in this region is making sure that people get skilled up and people have quality jobs. And I would also direct you to our own Clackamas Workforce Partnership Group here in Clackamas County. They have been a leader in expungement opportunities, that is, for people that have criminal records that are relatively minor, how can they get them expunged and how can they move them forward into moving to get quality jobs? So this is all a part of the Columbia Willamette Workforce Collaborative that includes all of the workforce areas in our entire region. So thank you so much for, rest assured, I got all the notes and the minutes yesterday, and I will be reading them. At this event, I also had to have the opportunity to have a quick conversation with Tim Cook. Tim is our Clackamas Community College President. And as you know, one of the things that we have talked about that has not yet come to fruition, and I will give Chair Smith a lot of credit for this as well, for a number of years, we had talked about having another building for extension on our campus. And recently, if you can get ahold of the Investing in a Vibrant Clackamas County Community Report, it was from 2022, they'll have 2023, it gives you a whole idea of what everything extension does in this county, why it is important. Largely, it's important because we are a food hub. We provide this region with fresh, quality food, and I must say that we have the largest number of farmers' markets in the state of Oregon here, where not only do we produce products that get shipped overseas, such as berries, so there's an international piece. We also have a local piece where people can get fresh, wonderful food. One of our farmers' markets, Oregon City, is a year-round farmers' markets. But one of the things I talked to Dr. Cook about, if there is indeed a possibility to locate an extension building on the campus of Clackamas Community College as they move forward with their bond, one of the things I was a little surprised to know was he had never heard of NREC before. And NREC is the North Willamette Research and Extension Center, and it is our anchor for agricultural research up here in Clackamas County. It is Clackamas County land. They do berries research, they do soil science research, they are doing something new called agrivoltics research. And what they're finding out, instead of competing for land use, OSU researchers have found that solar and agricultural can share land for the benefit of both. They have a whole research facility there that is looking at how you can grow products underneath solar arrays. They are essentially leading this nationally. So I am hopeful, if something comes to fruition at Clackamas Community College, that there is also a nexus with our research station, with our soil scientists, with our entomologists, with our berry specialists, to also inform a curriculum there in their biology department. This is just an idea, but I talked to him about it, and he was like, I didn't even know that this was available. So I think actually the idea, if we can move this forward, is going to be fantastic. It's really going to be really not only giving all the other pieces that extension provides to the community, there can also be an education, research nexus, if they can work in tandem with the North Willamette Research and Extension Center. So it's just an idea I threw out with him. I thought it was a pretty fruitful conversation. I think it's doable, but it's just an idea yet, and I have to make sure that the rest of my colleagues here are on board with this kind of notion and this idea. The last thing is that I'm finding out that I will be going to the National Association of Counties Legislative Meeting in Washington, DC. And evidently, they keep asking me to be on panels. I am now on three essential panels. One is I will be flying out, and I've already connected with the folks that work on our IT initiatives and our broadband expansion with ARPA dollars. They have asked me to talk about how Clackamas County, on a panel, has used our ARPA dollars and previous dollars we were able to get from the Economic Development Commission to expand broadband in this county. That will include the business plan that we have pulled together, so we are not competing with our smaller providers. What we're essentially doing is providing the backbone where they can connect to extend services to our rural areas, and they will like, they will actually be presenting the business plan that enabled us to work with them to make those expansions happen. So that's been a nice thing. I've also been asked to speak on a panel about the Early Learning Hub information that we've been doing here in Clackamas County. There's been conversations with our workforce board, our business community, and the folks and children and families about how do we make sure we have enough child here? We are working, we're using this actually under two umbrellas, the umbrella of our economic development work, because we are finding that people cannot get to work unless they have adequate childcare. But we're also looking at it from that social service piece of how do we get people to have childcare so they feel comfortable? We have a childcare facility here in this county under Siemens, believe it or not. They actually are a model of how a large international business has seen the value of childcare and maintain a campus there. That's one of the models. So I will be speaking there as well on that topic at the, at the national conference. I'll also be chairing the Community Economic Development and Workforce Committee, where we will be moving forward with our national resolution to make sure that Housing and Urban Development, HUD, gets adequate funding for all the housing work we need to do at the local counties. I recently returned from Mobile, Alabama, where we learned about economic development and the tourism nexus. I'm going to ask all of you to please watch the, I believe it's on Netflix, if you can watch the documentary on the Descendants. It is a documentary about the last slave ship that was brought to the United States of America and how those people were pretty much left in a swamp. The boat was taken and burned in a river. It's now being recognized as a piece of the history of Mobile, Mobile, that's coming to the fore. And the African-American community there is now moving forward with basically a walking tour, similar to what they have in Boston, about where some of the key elements of African-American history have happened. I'm going to be in conversation with Mayor Denise McGriff, who I believe is one of the first African-American folks in our county who is a mayor. They are actually working on a similar project because there is an African-American story to talk about here in Oregon City. And I believe that acknowledging those kinds of histories not only are important for us as a community, it does offer opportunities to come and visit and learn the broader histories, not only of our colonization, of how we have moved here at the end of the Oregon Trail, but also the role of our African-American community, as well as our indigenous, indigenous communities. So that's just been some of the things that have been circling in my head, and I want to thank my colleagues for giving me the leeway, an opportunity to work on those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader, for those comments. And Commissioner West, please go ahead.
Thank you. It's been a fun and busy week. Some of this I've already, I won't cover again because I covered it in the policy session. I have been engaging with many of our different departments and getting acquainted and getting great overviews of the work that they do. I have done some work with Sheriff Brandenburg and getting a briefing from the underdeputy, the undersheriffs from the CCSO. I had a long and productive meeting with the mayor of Happy Valley, Mayor Tom Ellis. Much of our conversation was about the priorities and the goals of our partners in the cities, the 16 different cities we have, what's going on and where does that intersect with Clackamas County. Talked a lot about Turnkey. He gave me, we hopped in his truck, and he gave me a tour of the city also after a meeting with the city manager, Jason, which was very productive. We also spent some time doing a jail inspection with Commissioner Scholz. We did that, was that yesterday? It's all a blur, you guys, so it's like, when did we do that? I know it was this week. We did a, an inspection of the, of the jail. We walked through with the sheriff and the captain and other staff and got a really strong overview and history of the jail, some of the needs that they're facing, some of the successes and how they do amazing things with limited resources for many years now, and it is a priority probably for us to address that. I spent quite a few hours last night with an organization that partners with the county called LoveOne. They do a lot of programming and outreach to the homeless in our community. And there is a couple, I'll get their names right, it is Brandon and Max, open Brax, combination of the names. They opened up and refurbished a laundromat here in Oregon City, and twice a month, they help provide services for people that are vulnerable to homelessness or are homeless to do their laundry. And that they use this opportunity to really help direct people to services and stability for drug addiction services, mental health services, housing services. So it's a great way to build this trusting relationship with this population, so we can move from ambivalence to change, so we can get, so we can continue to do that good work. I got to do some nursing while I was there. Somebody had a wound that needed to be dealt with, and I was the guy on site. So Commissioner West put on the nursing hat for a moment and got to do some wound care, which was, but it was a bit, but that was my highlight because I love doing the nursing stuff. So we have a, you know, a busy, busy next week. I'm looking forward to reporting to you guys again about the work that we're doing. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to serve you guys. And Thelma, I'm still at the other end of the fire hose, and I know you're there, keeping me accountable. I see you. So, but like I said, I'm thirsty and we're going to get the work done, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Commissioner Savis, how are you doing?
Thank you, colleagues. I've lost my voice almost every day and try to recover it in the evening, so I've been probably not as talkative as I normally, because I'm just trying to preserve my voice here. So thank you for bearing with me. I wanted to speak. Gary, I heard your words, but I'm going to speak a little bit about the lady who is here regarding the shelter. I think it's important to say, and hopefully we can get that in our talking points, the points made. Back in 2016, when the Budget Committee met, we, with a 7-3 vote, we able to get $300,000 allocated towards a first shelter, veteran shelter, and Commissioner Schrader and I supported that fortunately, and it took a long time to launch that. And through a number of laborious and challenging times and the help of the Administrator Crupp at the time and staff, we were able to get the Veterans Village done. But also in 2016, the Board, and I'm grateful to the Board, my colleagues, past and present, that supported the houseless issue and the homeless issue and building the units, recognizing what was coming, and here we are today. And tomorrow, I'll be out again on the homeless count like I have been for several years. And we did that with intention as a pilot project to demonstrate to the community that we can do it right here in Clackamas County, that we, and I know that people watch TV and they're, you know, front and center, it's usually Portland-centric, you know, people are seeing the problems, that's what makes the headlines, not the good stories. The good stories don't always make the headlines. But we have done it well, and that pilot project is now successful. And as Commissioner Schrader said, you know, the local employers have even put some of those folks to work, and we have transitioned people into permanent housing. It's amazing what we have done. The Turnkey or the hotel model, hotel motel model pilot of housing people, we're housing approximately 90 people per day today, scattered around the county. And as I tell some of the people that are worried, that are concerned, I hear your fears, but your fears are not materializing where we're doing this today. And as a matter of fact, if I can give you any certainty, the fact that we will own this one, that we will operate this one, and we will have more stringent, perhaps, guidelines in our staff there all the time, 24/7, you can be assured that this will be a better-run facility than the ones that we have less control with. So I think that's, that's, you know, a demonstration, we have demonstrated, and that's what was our intention, we've done, we've done that with intention. Furthermore, the other part that we've heard for years, and since I've been a Commissioner from businesses, that about the homeless problem that's impacting them daily, where there are no facilities. And so we are trying to respond to them saying, they need help, law enforcement needs help to help get these people back into housing. So this is really, if you really think about this, this is actually responding to the call from the businesses in the community by this, this acquisition of the quality end. So I'm excited. Sure, we have challenges, but I intend, as at least one Commissioner here with one vote, to honor the promises we've made and give the assurances out there that we'll run this correctly. I do want to speak just briefly, I mentioned just briefly that about the I do want to speak just briefly, I mentioned just briefly that about the homeless count tomorrow. People stereotype the homeless, and I think our staff had demonstrated, it's not just, it's not just, it's a population, certainly, but they're not, you can't, you can't stereotype them. There's all different types of people and different kind of situations. And the very first homeless count I did in this county 10 years ago, I was so surprised because I didn't really have, I had some experience, but not that direct experience. And I spent virtually the whole day out in Clackamas County on 82nd Drive, and the first family I met, mother, father, child, couldn't get a home, was not, no drugs, was not drug issue, was not alcohol issue, but it was almost all day, my, the thoughts that I had, the people I thought I would be meeting were not the people perhaps I think that most people assume, or the stereotype ends being either drug or criminals, or, you know, it's not, it's not that. Sure, there is some of that. But the learned lesson is that once you are in touch with the population and you understand the diversity and the unique situations that got them where they are, there is a lot of hope, and I think we need to instill hope into everything that we do. It's not a hopeless situation. And I think the problem with, that we face, and fortunately, I know we've advocated for, and I will continually advocate for strongly, that we invest in detox centers, we invest in mental health facilities, because that is the missing link. We're not going to be successful without it. I was just, am so impressed with the Central City Concern model that when I first toured that facility, I remember when we broke ground on that, I remember we cut the ribbon, and I also remember the follow-up, going to the facilities and talking to the success stories and how they operate that. And it's really about the discipline, the self-discipline of the tenants there themselves to get, you know, take that hand up and move up and get into permanent stable housing and employment and all those things to make them successful. So, it's a daunting effort, but I appreciate the board, my colleagues here, and Commissioner Smith as well, Chair Smith, that our dedication and commitment to that effort. So, we have a long haul, and tomorrow will be, again, an eye-opener for me again, and get to touch base with all those issues. But we, there's a lot of great work, but I will not forget, we cannot forget, whether it's the library issue, whether it's the advocates for the homeless, the community, the volunteers, their own money, their own time, and all these efforts. We've only touched two of them here today, really, but all these efforts, that we are stronger as a community together, and we couldn't do this alone without the community. And, you know, you can put a, you can try and put a dollar figure on that, but it's priceless. So, I just want to just thank everyone, and all the volunteers and all the nonprofits for their passion, and we have more of that to be discussed here soon, but just thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Yes, Commissioner Schrader.
So, the one you're talking about is the one that we built in the Clackamas Town Center with the wraparound services with Central City Concern.
Yeah, off of Monterey.
So, we have their presence here in this county.
And I'm hoping that they can do another one. I'm hopeful that they can, another facility, just bring more capacity. And we could possibly operate part of that model, and Commissioner West and I have talked about that. Maybe we can employ that at the Quality Inn as well.
Yes, thank you for that. Couple of comments today. Thank you, everybody, for coming and testifying and making this meeting today so productive. Yesterday, many of you might have seen the Zoom meeting on the County Climate Action Task Force, looking at a plan, climate action plan for the county. If you didn't see it, if you go to the county website, Sustainability Climate Action, or just type in Clackamas County Climate Action Plan, it'll come up and you can read that. We'll be having more public outreach on that in the next couple of months, and it comes to the board in April, I think, for a decision. On this topic, the issue of greenhouse gases have been around for a long time. You know, you might recall, way back in 2009, the Oregon Legislature set some goals for reducing greenhouse gases to 10% below the 1990 levels by 2020, and 75% below 1990 levels by 2050. Some very ambitious goals. Metro recently, in their Climate Smart Strategy, stated, quote, that their efforts on greenhouse gas reduction will be focused on reducing vehicle miles and not on making fuels and vehicles cleaner and more efficient. The situation we have in the county here is that often what works for a dense metropolitan area doesn't work too well for rural areas, and Clackamas County being the county and the state that's got the highest population of rural residents makes our situation more difficult and will require a great deal of consideration. So, I hope people can get involved in this climate action plan and weigh in on it, see if you like it, make comments if you don't. One perspective on greenhouse gases real quickly. If the United Kingdom were to fall into the ocean tomorrow with its 63.5 million population, they would only save about a little less than 2% of total greenhouse gas emissions. At 4.3 million people, the state of Oregon, if we stopped using all energy of every kind tomorrow, would save about 7 one-hundredths of 1%. And Clackamas County being 1/10th of our state population at 430,000 would save around 7 one-thousandths of 1% of total global greenhouse emissions. So, I mention that to you because we've got to keep the cost of dealing with greenhouse gases in line with our ability to actually effect change. So, the next thing I want to thank are community planning organizations, our CPOs, for the great work they do. Recently, I've been involved with meetings with the Sunnyside, Westmount Scott CPO, the Stafford Hamlet CPO, and the Hoodland CPO. They do such great work, and people in the county who don't feel like they're plugged in to politics need to get involved in their local CPO, the great organizations. Finally, the 2023 Oregon State Legislature already has almost 2,000 bills in front of it for their work to deal with this year. It's going to be overwhelming, and we have a lot of new representatives and senators down in Salem. I encourage everyone to pick one or two or three issues that are on their minds, contact your state rep, get involved, and make things happen. Finally, I want to thank the county sheriff, Captain Eby, our county jailer, and all the staff from the Clackamas County Jail for doing a great job. Commissioner West and I were down there yesterday. We had a tour, we inspected the jail. It looks very good. And I want to thank everybody involved in Clackamas County to keep this county law and order 24/7/365. I appreciate it very much. And finally, a thought for the day, bad libraries build collections, good libraries build services, great libraries build communities. And like I said before, there's 434,000 people that live in Clackamas County and 435 library advocates. Thank you for your time today. And if that is all the work we have, I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners, County Council, Madcor, Commissioner Schmidt, and Clerk to the Board, Tony, and you all have a good day. And this concludes our meeting. Thank you.